We ready? Welcome, everybody. Today's Monday, February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five at six P. M. We're at the Morgan Family Center, and I call the City Commission Special Meeting to Order. A roll call, we've got Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Petro. Sukwarum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golin, City Clerk Faust, Police Chief Garrison, and Fire Chief Titus. For the pledge, Robin, would you do us the honors? You're a good woman. All righty. First up, City Clerk, we have public comments. Come up to the podium. Welcome. Three minutes.
My question does not have to do with the referendum, but there was really no other place to put this in there. I know that my wife and I own a home that we overlook a low-water canal, and we just couldn't bear that someone would build right behind us. So we bought three lots there. We bought a lot in front of us. And then we hear that there's going to be potentially a hundred-dollar assessment per year on empty lots. And didn't really, you know, I don't mind paying that, but I just think that it's, it was just kind of a shock to me. So I was wanting to get some kind of clarification, but I think that a lot of people do that more than you would know. And I know it's, it's low-hanging fruit to try to get a hundred dollars for every empty lot on people that are out of town and, and, but that kind of bleeds over to in-town citizens as well. And so I would be opposed to that. That's all I got.
Brenda Van Salzberg. You'll have to forgive me if I'm a little nervous. This is on the fly. I've been a resident of Northport for twenty-five years, back when there was a blockbuster by Publix. I own and operate two businesses locally. I had the pleasure of working on a project with Captain Fussell, and I got a tour of the police station. And they really were in broom closets. They were crammed into spaces, and I was very disheartened by that. This Christmas, I also had the pleasure of being involved with Shop with a Cop and decorating families' homes that were in need and bringing Christmas gifts, et cetera. And the care that the police officers had for their community was beautiful. And I think we need to return the love that they had for us to them and get them a proper place to do business. Thank you. That is on there.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we've got a brief presentation about Sarasota County Schools regarding planning for growth in Northport. City Manager, this is your item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We want to thank Dr. Kemp and his team from Sarasota County Public Schools as they give us a presentation that will talk about growth, which flows right into our conversation of our referendum items. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Good evening. How are you? Mayor, Mr. Fletcher, I would appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you. My name's Dr. Michael Kemp. I am the Chief Operations Officer for Sarasota County Schools. And on behalf of our superintendent and board, I wanted to say how much I appreciate first our, our relationship with our municipalities, but all the work we do with our, our Police Department, Fire Services. Why we work together with municipalities is really, really important. I just wanted the opportunity to talk, to talk to you tonight about Sarasota County Schools and what we're doing from our perspective with our team on growth, how we're handling growth, how we're handling the projections of growth, what we're seeing coming down the, the path. Share some of the tools that we have, that we use that actually look at the development in the area that help us predict what the, the student populations are going to be. As you know, we have two, we have some significant, significant investments in, in this area. One with the Wellen Park High School. It's a two hundred, it could be about two hundred and eight, two hundred and ten million-dollar project. By the time it's all done with furniture, fixture, equipment. So we've got some significant projects that are coming up. But I'd like to very quickly, if I could, introduce our team tonight. Diane Comanati, she's our Director of Planning, will, will be going through a brief presentation to show you the growth and show you a tool called Near Map that we use. I also want to ask my, our team to stand up because they're so involved with what we're doing down here in South County with the Northport area. First, I have Jane Drager. She is our Director of Construction. So if something's built with the school district, Jane's it. I have Jody Dumas. Jody Dumas, formerly COO, and he's a Director of Facilities. And we also have one of our project managers that deals multi-multi-million-dollar projects. That's Kevin Snyder, happens to live here, and his backyard is here, here to hear it. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and talk to you a little bit about the, the growth. I'm going to ask Diane to come up. You know, one thing about change is the, the only alternative to change is obsolescence. And one of the most difficult things we do is plan for the growth that's coming. But in order for us to, we can't wait for the kids to get here. We have to be ready when the kids do get here. So when you talk about all the coordinated activities that must take place with infrastructure, roads, signalization, all the things that we have to put into, to the ground. Sometimes it's very difficult to understand not only the cost we're, we're dealing with, with, with cost of construction, because people are always surprised by that, but the logistics involved in coordinating the right services, coordinating the right activities to make sure that we're prepared when students come. We cannot, we don't have the luxury of waiting until kids get here to then prepare. So that's one of the biggest issues that Commissioners have to deal with is balancing planning for the future for now. And I just wanted to provide that support to you and this team. So with that said, I'm going to ask Diane to come up, and she's going to go over what we see for South County growth. I think you're going to find it amazing when you get to see the growth. You hear about it, and you know pockets of it when you drive around Northport. When you get to see one of the tools we use that really tracks that, I think you're going to be shocked over the last ten years. Diane.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp. So I am going to show you a tool that our Planning Department uses to monitor growth in our area. It is called Near Map, and I'm going to, ooh, try and bring it up from here. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. So it's not showing. I got hairy. Y'all didn't tell us? It's showing now? There we go. Okay, great. So Near Map is a tool we use that shows us base, basically what the area looked like ten years ago compared to today. And, oh, I'm sorry. So on the left side of the screen is the city of Northport, and that's the, the city boundary in blue. And on the right, the right side, the left side of the screen is ten years ago. So that's taken December of two thousand fourteen. And then the, the right side of the screen is, is of December twenty twenty-four. And anything you see when I kind of slide back and forth that's in red is active construction that's happening. So I'm going to slide this screen all the way to the right. And so this is what the city of Northport looked like ten years ago. Now, if we take that and scroll to the left here, you can see all this red coming up. And of course, a lot of it is in Wellen Park, but other areas too. And then kind of when we zoom in, you'll see even more because of the platted lots. There's little dots here and there, and each one of those is a platted lot that someone is building a house on. So that's just one of the tools we use to kind of see where active development is occurring. And now to get back up here. So and other ways we monitor development are through applications for, there's two types of, of applications that we monitor. One, we call capacity determinations. These are your rezones, comp plan amendments, developments of critical, critical concern that are higher-level developments coming in for review to, you know, it may be zoned for agricultural use or something, and, and a developer is buying up that, up that property and rezoning it for residential use. We have to look at that and kind of get an idea of how, how that's going to affect our school capacity within the next ten to twenty years. And we provide a capacity determination report to the municipality based on that application that comes in. The other are what we call concurrency determinations, which are final site plans, final plaits. These are more, the, the developer is, is, already knows what they're going to build. They know how many dwelling units, whether it's going to be multifamily or single-family homes. And that kind of is where we vest concurrency for seats at our schools. So those are two ways we look at development. And we sit on the, the Development Review Committee and provide comments to applications that come in. So the, the first area we're going to look at is Wellen Park. And we kind of look at this area separately because it came in as a, a large master-planned community. It was approved for over twenty-two thousand five hundred units. Of those, about seven thousand four hundred twenty-eight have been built since two thousand five. So there's still about eleven to fifteen thousand dwelling units remaining, even though they were approved for twenty-two. In, in recent conversations we've had with them, they're expecting about eleven to fifteen thousand more. So how we look at that impact, we have a student generation rate that we apply to residential development to kind of get an idea of how many students might come out of that development. So between thirteen, eleven to fifteen thousand dwelling units, we're looking about twenty-four hundred to thirty-three hundred students. So this is a kind of a, a map of, of the Wellen Park. And we do have the Wellen Park High School, which Dr. Kemp mentioned, which is set to open in August of two thousand twenty-six. We also have a K-eight site adjacent to the high school site in Wellen Park. And then we have a, a K-eight site in Winchester Ranch, which is just south of that area, which has been approved for another nine thousand dwelling units. So this area of, of Wellen Park, which is in the city of Northport, is actually currently districted to Taylor Ranch Elementary, Venice Middle, and Venice High School. The, as noted in, in the previous slides, and it spoke about the Wellen Park High School, will relieve overcapacity for Venice High, which is over by four hundred and thirty-two students currently. It'll also take back students from, that live in Sarasota County, districted to Lemon Bay High School. And we're currently evaluating how to bring in students from Northport High as well. So we look at the, what we, we look at Northport development, kind of the, what we call the city of Northport proper outside of Wellen Park. We, we evaluate that separately because of the platted lots. So this is a little more difficult for us to monitor growth because the property owner could, could pull a permit, build a house, and we don't really get to see that. We don't know when that's happening. We do get reports when we can from the, the Building Department of COs. We try to get quarterly reports of how many COs, residential COs are happening so we can keep track of kind of an idea of how many are being built. But, but currently, there are about thirty-seven thousand eight hundred vacant residential platted lots within the city of Northport. There's also some major developments happening as well. There's the buildout of the Woodlands DRI, Central Park, Toledo Preserve, the Village of Star Farms, and the Shire, which was recently approved for between three thousand to five thousand multifamily homes. And again, how we evaluate or monitor this growth and its impact on our schools, the one to ten years, that's, those are our concurrency reviews. Those are the, the final plaits, final site plans that can start building. Of those applications, we have about two thousand nine hundred dwelling units, which have the potential to generate about a hundred and twenty-eight students. And then those higher-level capacity determinations for rezones, we have about ten thousand four hundred dwelling units in application and, which can generate up to fourteen hundred fifty students. And those vacant lots with over thirty-seven thousand eight hundred of them, you know, they somehow were to build all at once, that would generate about eight thousand three hundred students. But we know that's not going to happen. We just monitor that over time, excuse me, as we can. So to get a visual of those, what those vacant, platted lots look like, each of these yellow dots represents a vacant platted lot. And then we do have some district-owned school sites in this area. We have an elementary site in the Woodlands. We have a high school site as well in the Woodlands. We have a, another elementary site in the Haberlin neighborhood and a middle school site in Largo Preserve. So your capacity at our Northport schools, currently Cranberry Elementary is the only school that is over a capacity. There are portables on that campus to address that overcapacity. And then our capital improvement planning, how the Planning Department evaluates. We do a yearly evaluation by monitoring our high-growth areas. We evaluate school capacities and projected enrollments. We identify projects for the next five years and their funding sources. And these could be not just capacity projects, but also maintenance projects. And then determine the timing of new school facilities. So some projects coming up that are within our capital improvement plan. We have one upcoming capital improvement project worth noting, and that's the HVAC and Science Wing Refresh at Northport High School. This project is a campus refresh and an upgrade of the mechanical systems, including bringing the science facilities up to current standards. And a few capacity projects and strategies. We, we do have the new, new elementary school in Woodlands and the new high school in Woodlands that we are currently monitoring growth to determine when to, the, the timing for, for when to start those new schools. And then we're also looking at options for classroom wings where possible on existing sites to expand capacity as well. And then I'm going to have Dr. Kemp take over.
So, no, thank you, Diane. So, so when you look at that growth, you say, that's great. We're putting two hundred and ten million dollars in Wellen Park High School. When you go back, that's a slide back, we talked about North, you say, what about Northport High School? We budgeted in our CIP, we, we budgeted approximately eighty million dollars for the big renovation project at Northport. That's, that's extensive renovation to bring Northport High where it needs to be. We have challenges. Every municipality, we all have challenges of funding. I always tell our board, we can do anything. We just can't do everything. So we have, you know, strategic priorities require strategic abandonment. So when you talk about Northport High School, we budgeted eighty million dollars in that project. When Jane and Jody and the team back there, they sent out the original architect estimate, architect estimates have come back for that project that's going to be, that's still, by the way, in our capital improvement plan, it's going to be approved by the board. That is now going to be approximately one hundred and one million dollars investment into Northport High School for the renovations there. So, you know, I, I can remember a time when I thought that, I mean, in, from construction in the facilities planning arena, where ten million dollars seemed like a lot of money, right? Well, we have those challenges. So the capital challenges we face all the time is, first of all, how do we manage the growth? If, if you see the number of students that could possibly come to the South County area, and to be real honest with you, it's going to require leadership now to prepare for the future. So, because we won't, you know, I, I know the vision. I know, I know the vision for Northport. I know the vision for, for the Police Department. We know the visions for the school district. There's really nowhere, when you look at the county, there's really not a lot of places for the, for future growth to come, except that's out, southeast, south of, east of seventy-five and south, South County. The growth is coming. You know, we're not stopping the growth. The growth is going to continue to come over the next time. So we have to manage that growth, number one. One of the things we have to deal with is we're required to build the state requirements of ed facilities, our building requirements. You know, people think, what, what does that mean, Mike? You say, Mike, what's that mean? Well, what that means for us is, you know, we have to build a different, when we build school facilities that house children, we have to build to extremely, extremely high standards that meet SREF requirements. We have to build to wind loads of a hundred and eighty, you know, a hundred and eighty mile-per-hour wind loads. Architects can tell you all that we have to do to, to make our facilities appropriate for kids and, in some cases, shelters, storm shelters for that. So the cost, when you talk about the state requirements for ed facilities, that is a challenge that we have in our, in our coastal communities here that other districts don't. Let me give you an example. We can build an elementary school two, three hours up the road in North, in, in North Jacks, North Jacksonville area. I could build an elementary school pre-COVID now. Pre-COVID, that's another challenge, the pandemic. But pre-COVID, I could build an elementary school for a, in my, in that market up there for about twenty-seven million dollars, furniture, fixture, equipment, everything. That's nine hundred and sixty kids. Post-COVID, same market up there, it went from twenty-six million to forty-six million dollars post-COVID. I come to Sarasota, and one of the first thing I find out is our elementary schools are, are eighty, ninety, ninety million dollars here. And I remember asking Jody, I said, Jody, help me understand. I know that we've got wind load requirements, I know we've got different things. But the cost, the cost of building this region, no matter what it is, you could be doing a cell tower, you could be doing the Police Department, you could be doing, you know, some infrastructure things for your municipality. It's unbelievable. I will say this to you. The pandemic, the cost doubled. The cost doubled. So what does that mean? That means, that means it costs us twice as much to do half of what we could do before. So when I tell you from a school district perspective, or maybe from the municipality perspective, that, that strategic priorities require strategic abandonment or delay, we have to be very careful because we can do anything, we just can't do everything. So with that said, our pandemic never ended in construction. For your, your teams to infrastructure, roads, lead times, the cost of materials. Now, the world put their masks down, the world, you know, put, put the masks down, and the signage went away, the spacing requirements went away, we came back to normal. It has never come back to normal in, in, in planning with, with lead times, with steel, and preparing for projects. So I just wanted to let people know, it's my soapbox because I care. Talked to legislators about it. You know what? They say, you know, we really never thought about that, Mike, the cost, you know? They look at a cost-per-student station, and they tried to hold us to a cost-per-student station at the state level. They really need to start looking at cost per square foot for the market that we're in because it's costing us twice as much and more to do half. I just told you, a basic renovation project that was budgeted for eighty million became a hundred and one million. That, and that's just to renovate Northport High School. And, you know, contrary to public perception, or maybe I should say contrary to public misperception, you know, we, we didn't get any additional capital funding relief. I, I could argue, I'm not an attorney, like over there, the guy sitting over there, but I, I could argue with you. I could argue, put a good, good argument together that, that the single biggest impact of the pandemic, other than people losing a, a life, that part, the biggest single impact has been the cost of supplies, material, and labor, and what it's done. We never got any relief from that. Oh, what about all that federal money, Doc? You know, what about, yeah, it was limited. We could use it for HVAC filtration system, just the filtration piece. Couldn't use it for what we need it for. So that's really important. I just want to make sure you understand that the challenges that you face as Commissioners and the leadership of Northport, whether it's the chief, the, the Police Department, the Fire Service, it's, that's going to continue. It's still going to continue, cost is twice as much to half of what we used to do. So that means for us at the school district, and we've had these conversations, and we'll have them again with our board, and that is, we have to be really fiscally responsible with debt service and how we're monitoring that debt service. When you start talking about Wellen Park, two hundred and ten million dollars. You talk about Sky Ranch, what, what was, what's that one coming out at a hundred? Hundred and four million. We're at a third of a billion dollars in debt service. You know, and so I'm one hundred percent in support of making sure we're being fiscally responsible. But when you talk about a third of a billion-dollar mortgage payment, that comes right out of capital programs off the top, we have to be very strategic in what we're doing because of the cost of things and where we are. That's why you heard Diane say, until, until we can get the debt service where it needs to be, we're going to make sure that we look at classroom additions and more fiscally responsible ways to do that. So with that said, we could have a, a collective effort with our legislative bodies. If we could have that, we could absolutely, from the, all the coastal communities, to have some impact, to try to get some relief on the cost of construction in our area. But the burden lies with us, you know, because at the end of the day, saw all the potential kids that could be here. And I just wanted to come in, in, in support of Northport, our mayor, the, the city, the city manager, everything we're trying to do to be ready for, for children. The growth is coming. As much as we'd like to stop it, stop the traffic, stop the growth, stop, I'm telling you, the growth will continue to come, and we need to be ready for that. So with that said, this concludes our, our, our presentation on growth. But I, I thought it would be good for you to hear the challenges we face as a school district because we got, our board's about to make some tough, tough, tough choices too about what projects. Jody's got the CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan developed to go in front of our board. I suggest that you look at that. If it's not in the CIP, it's not happening unless it's an absolute emergency of some type that, that we're not prepared for. So that really concludes our presentation. And, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to, to, to talk to you. Remember this, vision without implementation is hallucination. So we have to be able to execute. Vision without implementation is hallucination. So we got to be able to execute, and though we're in authority, And though we're in authority, if we don't have the capacity, or is an authority without capacity is futility, right? So we have to be ready when it comes. So I'm asking for the continued support of our partnership, continued support, working together in this community because our efforts are going to be focused on South County. Probably shouldn't say that publicly. Somebody's going to get mad that lives somewhere else. But our, but we know where the growth is coming. We know where the growth is and we know what we're, what we're prepared for as a district. Mr. Mayor. All right. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate, appreciate you all.
To the meat of things. Uh, next item is general business. I'm going to turn it over to city manager to introduce this item and, and then we can move one by one through the, uh, through the referendum questions. What we will do, this will be a true question and answer. Okay. People will be able to come up, ask their questions. I'll ask which commissioners want to field them. We can have a little back and forth. We want to try not to go too far down a rabbit hole on any one person's questions so that anyone who has them can make sure they get their questions asked and answered. And we want to try to stay focused on these five referendum items. This is a sunshine meeting, so these items are the items we can speak to. I know that sometimes there's things people want to talk about outside the scope of these five. And those, you're more than welcome to reach out to any of us at any time. I personally will meet with anybody on any subject. But, you know, tonight we want to try to focus on these because these are important. So with that, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it says introduction by city manager. It was just introduced by the city mayor. So he said just about everything I was going to say. So we thank you for being here. We're glad that you're here. Your voice is important and you need to make it heard and we want to hear it. We hope that you leave here with more information than you came here with, with, in, with the intent of making your decision at the special election on May 13th. As the mayor said, all five questions are important. You have the chance and opportunity to speak on all five questions. It is really going to be an interactive engagement between the board and our community tonight. And this is not something that we do on a regular basis, but given the importance of all five of the questions, we felt it was very relevant for you to have that opportunity so that it would not just be us speaking to you or you just listening to us. So we look forward to the conversation. And we, we really want to encourage you to come up and say what you have to say, whether it's a question or a comment tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Um, and again, I just want to extend our collective thanks to the folks who came out here tonight. Spread the word. There are two more town halls. Get people out here to ask the questions. There are so, I mean, these are important issues. They warrant questions and answers and understanding. If you all are going to go vote on these things, you want to have all the information you need, all the facts you need to make good, smart, informed decisions. So with that, um, first item up, 25-1919, which is discussion regarding referendum question relating to city borrowing authority for response to, excuse me, to declared emergencies with public and answer, public question and answer session. So with that, um, Jerome, do you want to introduce the item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item is, we, when we failed the referendum last November, the main comment that we heard back was if, if you had broken up the questions, we would have voted for one and not the other. So this was a direct response to us listening and breaking the questions up from what we had. The original question last year was the borrowing for the declaration of emergency versus, um, and excuse me, and including failing infrastructure for public safety and health. And this year, what we did was we broke it up for the borrowing for the disaster recovery, which I don't think we need to explain that too much to anyone in this room based on the hurricane output that we've had in the last few years. In the last eight years, we've had eight category four or five hurricanes. Prior to the last eight years, it took 56 years for the state of Florida to have category four and five hurricanes. So we are definitely in a trend here of hurricanes reoccurring and we need to be prepared for when that happens, not if it happens. So this first question that we are proposing to the public for you to vote on is, do we have, can we have the authority to borrow during emergencies? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, um, anyone wishing to ask questions regarding this particular referendum item, please come on up and, we'll get it started. And could you please introduce yourself since I'm not sure anybody really knows who you are?
Debbie McDowell, citizen, former commissioner. This emergency borrowing, I just have two little questions. How will the debt be repaid? And these are questions I've been getting from other citizens.
Any of my fellow commissioners want to field this one? Okay, I'll be happy to. Um, you know, part of the reason we're asking for emergency borrowing authority in, 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 in the event of natural disasters are because the state and federal governments offer a lot of low and no interest financings. Much of those borrowings or those loans are actually forgivable, which really gives municipalities a strong tool to use i- in the event of trying to cope with natural disasters, to clear debris and, and restore some of the facilities and infrastructure. This will give us that ability and those loans are typically, you know, a couple of percent. And, um, like I say, most of the time or a lot of the time, they're forgivable. The way in which they get paid back would be in the same way any loans would be paid back, predominantly through our general fund, um, through a combination district utility funds, depending on the type of project that was being restored or repaired or fixed or replaced. When Ian hit, if I remember the number, it was somewhere up in the 60, 70 million dollar range just to clear debris. How do we pay for that? Luckily, we had reserves, but, you know, s- city government, county government, state government, federal government, they really don't have any money. We have all the money, comes out of our pockets and that's where that money came from. Money that had been accumulated and collected and reserved for emergencies. One way or the other, we end up paying unless through grants and forgive, forgiving loans from our state or federal government partners. You know, we're able to, you know, to dodge that bullet. Otherwise, it's us who pays for it. I mean, it's, it's just that real. If we aren't able to take advantage of the most cost effective ways to borrow that money to help restore our infrastructure and clear our city up, it isn't like we can just leave the stuff for years. You, you see what happens around the county, various counties, sometimes up to a year or more. You, you see, things are a disaster. Um, it affects our businesses, our residents and everybody. So the key is, how do we do it the most cost effective way? And this is the most cost effective way. Why would we not want to take advantage of that low hanging fruit, the ability to borrow at the cheapest rates from our governments? And in, in a lot of cases, have it just forgiven so we don't have to pay it back. I mean, there really isn't any other way except to reach deeper into our pockets.
Thank you for that. As, as a follow-up, especially since you mentioned the cost of debris removal from Hurricane Ian, there was a piece, a, a document in the December 10th backup materials that basically was saying that there's a, a threshold for debt limit of about 150 million dollars. And I'm paraphrasing what was said. So if the referendums all get passed, so 150, take away 115 for the PD headquarters, take away 14 million for solid waste, take away 17 million, that leaves $4 million of the recommended threshold. But you just said the debris removal was 65 million. Where is the rest of that money going to come from if we, we go so far to that threshold limitation right off the bat?
One thing I probably failed to mention is that any monies that we come up with to make up the difference or that comes out of our tax dollars typically is reimbursed by insurance and/or FEMA. Not every single dollar, but a lot of that's reimbursable. And so, you know, when we laid out 60 some odd plus million dollars, the vast majority, I think all but a few million dollars, if I remember correctly, ended up coming back or is still in the process of coming back from FEMA. So, you know, it's, um, that's where a lot of it comes. And, and you know, when you look at the, the debt cap, which, which, uh, as McDowell mentions, you know, based on our current city revenues, our financial analysts say, you know, when you hit that 150 million dollar borrowing, if you ever did, the smoke detectors go off. It's like, hey, you're, you're, you're reaching a point where you better start paying some serious attention to how much debt because to service that debt requires cash flow. It requires our tax dollars. And we have operations to run this city at a quality level that everybody wants. So that 150 is a warning sign. Emergency borrowing, to a large extent, really doesn't need to be factored in there to the extent it's going to be repaid or reimbursed by insurance and FEMA because it's short term. It's a matter of a couple of years. Seems like forever before sometimes you get the FEMA money, but it comes back to us. The other projects, yeah, but remember as our city grows and our revenues grow, so does the ability to grow that cap, so to speak. So that was one of the reasons why the city commissioned our financial study. And anybody who's taken a look at that will see that over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, there's some significant revenue projection growth, projected growth for our city. The ability to, um, borrow is really dictated by the revenue stream we have to service that debt and the formulas need to be in line. The projects being proposed are critical projects and they're projects that commissions have looked at, studied, outside experts have weighed in on. So, you know, to say we're just year after year after year going to continue to spend, 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 borrow, borrow, not the case. But for very many years, a lot of projects just didn't get done and got kicked down the can, kicked down the road. I mean, one thing about this commission, it's a get it done commission. We do not want to repeat Rice Boulevard ever, ever again. And that's part of the reason. So I hope I answered the question. A lot of that emergency borrowing is coming back, if not all of it, in terms of reimbursement from FEMA insurance.
And if I could, I'd like to add on to that. When, when Ian came through, that pretty much took away all of our reserves. They were spent. We were doing cleanup and everything. And then here comes Milton. If we had the same catastrophe from Milton and not be able to borrow to do the cleanups, luckily it did not happen. Hopefully it never happens again. But to have that ability, we could have still been working on it. And as the mayor said, reserves could pay for the loans when we get reimbursed, it pays for the loans, or it could be even forgiven. Talking with our legislatures up in the state. So I just wanted to let you know that we were on a hairpin when Milton came through. And safety is a key.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Welcome.
Steve Jaeger, you want any more information?
Okay. Where I live, for example. It says, should the, shouldn't a charter be amended allowing the city to issue debt payable from funds other than property taxes without voter approval to respond to declared emergency or disaster? So what kind of debt would this be? Because it's not a revenue bond. So therefore, most of the time it's going to be a general obligation bond. If it's not a GO bond, what is it then?
It actually would be a revenue bond. Any GO bond, the state mandates, any general obligation bond must go to referendum, must be voted on by the citizens. So when we say without referendum, the city commission may authorize city in Northport to borrow money, contract loans, and issue revenue bonds payable from funds other than property taxes.
Okay, but there are no funds that support this kind of bond. There's no revenue stream for that. There's no revenue activity like sewer and water or, or et cetera. There isn't, it exists, especially when it comes to debris. You don't have a business called debris. You don't get fees from debris removal. So where is this, where is the revenue sources coming from?
Comes from our general funds, can come from possibly impact fees, can come from some enterprise funds, can come from district.
So it will come from taxes. It'll come from taxes.
It always comes from us.
But it'll come from taxes because it says it's not coming from property taxes.
Yeah, Ms. Kim can probably answer this question where, yeah, road and drainage revenue would, would take care of debris.
Okay. One question about the, the limits. Wouldn't it be better to establish a dollar limit on this category as you've done in other, other categories? This seems to be unlimited. And when you're talking about debris removal, uh, other incidental expenses, particularly when you're talking about infrastructure buildings, this can get really expensive, really expensive. So why not just have a top level amount for this category of somewhere around 60, 70, 80 million dollars? Because that should cover it for some period of time. Because you spent 48 million and I don't know how much you got back from it. From, from FEMA, you mentioned you got money back. You spent 45 for debris removal. But what's the net? Was that net? Was the 45 net? Or did you spend more? I mean, I, it's not clear.
If I recall, the number I believe was up near in the sixties and, um, virtually all, except for maybe a few million, will come back through insurance and FEMA if it hasn't already. So.
So I would, I would suggest you consider, um, limiting this for some dollar amount because it, it caps the exposure to the city.
Appreciate that. Anybody else on this particular referendum item? I have, okay.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Mitch, you said that the reserves is, we haven't replenished our reserves? I thought we had a policy that said we had to replenish.
They get replenished, I'm sorry. They get replenished as we get the money back from FEMA and everything. And I believe if Chuck was back there, we're almost, about, almost there on repayment. Yeah, they've been, they've been re, reestablished.
So it is, has been replenished?
Yes.
So then on, uh, Commissioner, Mayor, you talked about PF, uh, PFM and the studies they've given us. Where is this strategic prioritized CIP plan that we contracted $210,000 to do? I think that was, um, Mayor Langdon's at the time. Y'all wanted that and it's not here and we're moving forward anyway.
Well, um, that study, this, there were two studies. One was a financial plan that projected growth in revenues over the next 20, 30 or more years. The second was the capital improvement project, uh, study, which really was designed to help us better prioritize and plan our projects. That is forthcoming, I believe in March. Yeah. So, um, with regard to this particular referendum item, that report really doesn't tie in. It, it may well with, with the other referendum items, but.
That's what we were waiting for. That's why we didn't get PD to the, to the referendum in November when it should have gone. It was because we wanted to wait, have them have the overall picture. I see the solid waste. We, we haven't even approved that project and we're going to put 15 million on there. I'm talking to the mayor.
Um, the first question was about the road and drainage being replenished. It's not there yet. It's about, I thought, 2.7. It's about, I thought, two point seven million dollars is what I thought I saw at the end of last fiscal year, but it has to be completed by this year, in this year. And we are on track to do that. And also with the comprehensive um C I P project, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we spoke at the last commission meeting about that and we said you'd have it in about thirty days. So we're still looking for that thirty days at the uh, towards the end of this month. Thank you, sir.
So this while the solid waste transfer station we put on there, we haven't even had an a review by the commission on that. So and last year, all we heard was these water structures. I mean, God, I thought we were all going to drown. They were like falling apart. That's all we got sold last year. I was on board with it.
Miss Gibson, if you would be kind enough to please, as we move through these, come back up and and speak on the the individual infrastructure projects. Because. You know, we got to go through them one by one. Your questions are absolutely valid and and we'll talk to them. We'll talk to them. Um. I have a question that I've been asked numerous times by a lot of people who really don't follow what goes on. But heard, hey, gee, there's going to be this referendum in May to. Borrow money for emergencies and disasters. And people said, didn't we vote on this in November? I mean, I thought we already voted on this and we turned it down. Well. Yeah, by three hundred votes and it was turned down. But as city manager touched on, the language in that November referendum spoke to. Emergencies. It spoke to imminent infrastructure failure and public and health related projects. Some people said, gee, you could drive a Mack truck through those, that description. We heard you. The language reads very clearly. Without referendum, the city commission may authorize the city in Northport to borrow money, contract loans and issue revenue bonds payable from funds other than property taxes. To the full extent permitted by the state constitution and laws of Florida during the existence of a declared local, state and federal emergency or disaster. To remove debris from and to repair or reconstruct any public infrastructure or capital facilities damaged as a direct result of the emergency or disaster. We tried to hear you. We tried to make this language as tight as humanly possible so that people understood. We get hit. And we borrow money. It's going to be to get us back on our feet, to get the roads open, to get the bridges and water structures, to get our important, critical infrastructure projects. And for those people who said, well, gee, what if? What if the um aquatic park got blasted away in a hurricane? Does this mean you can go rebuild it? Well, yeah, but if that happens, like, I would say we probably have a lot of other more critical projects in the city that are going to need addressing. So one would certainly think that whether it's this commission or future commissions, the focus would be on those that are most critical to our citizens. And and, you know, we really made an attempt to make this referendum item tailored to what we heard back after November. This is such an important one. And this was the driver for this May referendum. People said. Why are you rushing a referendum in May? Who's around? Who's going to vote? We should wait till election years. This commission didn't feel it was responsible. We wouldn't be responsible to our citizens, to this city. If we went through another one or two hurricane seasons without some level of protection. That's why we're going to referendum in May. And adding these other projects, as you'll hear, I hope. They are of a of a nature that are critical, that that this commission and prior commissions have voted on and decided shouldn't get done. Anyway, with that, I don't want to be the only one speaking. So unless there are, and I'm doing a lot of talking, I know, if there are, yes, Mr. Speaks.
Chuck Speake, Public Works Director, just to touch on the the prioritization of our infrastructure. So we have five and ten year plans for our infrastructure. We know the status and the condition of that infrastructure. Uh, I know there's talk and and we will, you will continue to hear us talk about what are control structures needing replacing. We have other funding sources that are available right now for that, like S R Q and some other state funds that are coming down the line. That's why we're trying to prioritize this solid waste transfer station that doesn't have that source of income from anywhere else.
If I may. When it comes to these emergency funds. The next. General election will be in twenty twenty-six. We have two hurricane seasons to go through before then. And that's why this referendum is coming up now. So that we can have the ability to borrow money. At low interest rates or get FEMA grants. That may be zero interest rates. To get it now. Number one. So that we don't have to wait. Number two. So that we're not paying the extra money. People will tell you the lit, the. Folks that were here to talk about the schools. They told you that they expected a school to cost fifty million dollars and it was a hundred million dollars for renovations. Okay, they're predicting. Costs for construction to continue to go up about eight percent a year. So if we don't have the ability. To borrow money in natural disasters now, we're just going to end up paying more later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let's move to. On this referendum item.
Yes, I just wondered, the money that came back from FEMA and the insurance, is that not able to be used to help borrow money from the government? I'm trying to understand that piece.
Absolutely. Good. That will help. To pay it back again, if we need to.
More is what you're saying? That makes it needing to borrow because we will need more than that?
It would be sure nice not to have to deplete our reserves in the next storm if we could borrow no interest money. That in most cases is forgivable or in a lot of cases would be forgivable. Better to use the federal or state government's money than our money, our taxpayer money if we can.
So we can't use, that you said that we would need to borrow money. Couldn't we use the money that's in that fund and then they pay us that back?
We could. To the extent we have it, to the extent that the costs of repair and replacement are in excess, you know. We pretty much use most of the reserve funds to handle the debris cleanup. We still have. Critical infrastructure, buildings, government buildings that are still. In desperate need of repair that haven't been repaired. There's still a ton of things from Ian that haven't been addressed yet.
So when the money comes back from the government and from insurance, where would that go?
Comes back into their various buckets, whether it's road and drainage, whether it's uh general fund, whether it's uh, you know, wherever it came out of. Into reserves, into the reserves.
Okay, I'm just trying to do the math and I'm not following, sorry.
Here, baby.
The one thing, the way that I look at it, let's say we just have fifty million dollars in reserves and we got hit with a storm. And and the cleanup is going to cost us fifty million dollars. Do we want to deplete our reserves completely? Or possibly use twenty-five of our reserves and borrow twenty-five at zero interest to where we're waiting on that money to come back from FEMA or the state? To pay it back to where we still have twenty-five million in reserves. In case there is another storm or another catastrophe that comes up to where we're not broke, we still have a little bit of savings. That's the way I look at it, to be able to borrow if if the need arises. And that would be a board decision down the road on how we would want to do that, but depends on the tragedies and the catastrophic nature of what happens. I don't want to spend all of my savings on one storm if we have two storms. And then not have the ability to borrow because. Like we said earlier, there'll be no cleanup going on if we can't afford it.
So it's mainly for the second storm where you don't have the money and then.
Or or even the first storm. I would much rather have money in savings for the future than to spend it all in at one shot, you know? We spent close to sixty million dollars. We're still waiting. They just said like two point seven million dollars. We're still waiting on. But we could have been paying, let's say, a hundred grand a month, paying it back, waiting on FEMA instead of all that money going out at one time. That's just the way I look at it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one, one other little thought I would leave you with is that often money that comes from the state, loans that come from the state are forgiven. And we don't have to pay them back at all. So the ability to have that flexibility in terms of how we recover from a disaster can help us choose the way that is the least expensive for our community.
Um, I had one other thought. Um. Lately in my commission emails, I get emails from FEMA administrators. And they're basically uh notices that are telling the citizens. That the time limits to apply for FEMA loans, grants, uh recovery monies are running short. There are time limits and if we don't have. The ability. To borrow money to apply for those grants, to apply for those loans right away, those loans may go away before we get to it. So that's something to keep in mind.
Great point, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
We have a line for me. There we go.
Mayor, good. Bill Gunnin, I just want to add this in case it might help some. Um, we just got back from Tallahassee, speaking to our representatives, senators and um up there in Tallahassee. Couple of things. If we don't have the ability to borrow, you cannot ask for money from the federal or state government. You will not, you can't. If you cannot borrow, they will not give it to you. Second. If something has to go to referendum, they will not allocate money toward a project you want to have, example, police station. You can't do it. We tried that and they said no because it has to go to referendum. Only way you can get money from the state and the federal is you have borrowing power. And be honest with you, right now, we're the only city in the state that has, does not have that. So everybody else, when they had the hurricane stuff. Had the ability to ask for money and we could not because we don't have borrowing power. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Nemeth. Um. I'm a little concerned about what happens if this doesn't pass again. Is there, somebody thought about that? And if you have, what what's the plan?
The plan, sir, is to do about the best we can do with the resources we have. And if you want to know, we were as fortunate as we were after Ian, uh. Look around. Look around at Fort Myers, Cape Coral, Northern Sarasota County, Englewood. You will see what happens when municipalities and counties don't have the capability, financial capability. To handle. Debris removal and restoration after a natural disaster. Um. This one's so important. It just is so, so important to be able to do. Um. We don't want to go there. That's why we're back again after a referendum question in November. And 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 we tried to listen to everything people said to make this as tight a borrowing request as possible. You know, hopefully the citizens will understand that and will think about the very question you just asked.
I I'm just wondering if you have thought about it and what have you thought about? I mean, what are we going to do? Um, especially, I think for all these referendum questions, that's a good question to ask is, okay, what's the plan now?
Well, certainly for emergency borrowing, it is to, without the ability to borrow and take advantage of federal and state funding. Um, you know, is to do the best we can and and then to attempt reimbursement through FEMA and insurance and. Only to the extent we have the capability and and what we can't address waits. That's horrendous. As far as the other projects. If you be a little patient as we get to those.
Okay.
They're good questions and they're questions people have asked, like, what are you going to do if these? If this referendum for the police headquarters and 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 the, you know, the the water plant and the and the transfer station don't pass and we'll talk about them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to move? Yes.
My name is Patty Connors and I just had a question about. Is this like an open, like writing a blank check, first of all, and what projects are going to be able to, this money to be able to be used on for declared emergencies? Is it for the good of the people? Is it roads? Is it bridges? Is it replacing the roof on the police station, the fire station? I mean. Are are there any limitations going to be put on the use of this money um if it passes?
Well, I read the referendum language says to remove debris from and to repair or reconstruct any public infrastructure. Or capital facilities damaged as a direct result of the emergencies and disasters. The goal would be obviously to prioritize what's most important. If a bridge or water structure washed out, that sure would be the highest priority because we want to, we want our citizens to be able to traverse the roads to get to work. To get their kids to school and everything else, you know, so, yeah.
I remember when Price washed away from the hurricanes. But the police station took forever to get a new roof and the fire station. So is that? Is the money, would a borrowing money be going to something like that?
It would depend on how much money and it would depend on what other things were damaged and hurt. I mean. I can speak for myself as a commissioner and certainly any other commissioners here can speak up, but I would certainly want to focus first on what affects all our citizens. And the businesses and our schools and and those, what affects all of you as far as fixing the roof on a, on a government office building. I mean, they can wait. We we still haven't fixed a lot of them from Ian. When with regard to, you know, utilities and and parks and wrecks and some of these other facilities that were seriously damaged. But yet you need to address what affects our citizenry first.
Well, you just mentioned schools. That is not, we would not be borrowing money to fix schools.
Right, no. Yes, Ms. Tocars.
Hi, Pam Tocars. Just had a question. It's one of my obscure thoughts. Um, with FEMA and the borrowing, I know for residential. Uh, when I tried to borrow for Ian to uh with FEMA, they wouldn't cover me because I had um insurance to cover my costs. And I thought maybe I could get my, something replaced because I had a medical need for it. Uh, after I provided all my information, they said, contact the small business loans. So now with being, us being a municipality and now we have the ability to borrow money and get funds from the states. Part of the way, Mr. What's his name, Mr. Gunn, when he said that if we don't have it, the state won't give us money. So if we do have this, is this going to affect how FEMA is going to reimburse a municipality for the um debris removal?
There you go. Come to my rescue, Ms. Kim.
Good evening. I'm Kim Williams, the finance director. No, it would not impact the FEMA reimbursements.
Okay, so we'll still get money.
In most storms, we're able to recover a hundred percent for debris removal. It's the facility repairs that we have a little bit where we don't get the full hundred percent. But this wouldn't impact, impact. It would allow us to get. Take advantage of low interest loans that we're always going to miss out on. Say this doesn't pass. Um, we have an emergency, we have a need, we'll have to go to referendum and take the time to do that. By the time we get a referendum approval to get a loan, then those low interest loans will all be allocated. Yes, to others.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Let's move to the next one if we're ready. Um. This is uh. Item twenty-five dash nineteen twenty. Oh, okay. Yeah, discussion regarding referendum questions related to the removal of residency requirements. From the city Northport Charter for City Attorney and City Clerk Positions with Public Questions and Answer Session, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the justification for this question is, actually, the charter currently states that both of these two charter officers must stay within the city of Northport. Neither of these positions are public facing positions. They are both valuable and work directly for the commission. Your city manager has the same requirement in his contract to live in the city and that's because of the community outreach and the public facing events that I attend. But these two positions are mainly behind the scenes and not in the public eye. So therefore, we believe in order to get the best candidates and cast the widest net. Around this area that this requirement is not necessary at this time. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Questions and answers. Anybody got any questions on this referendum item? Okay. Oh, do you get to ask a question?
I don't have a question on this, but I do have, you know, my own personal answer. I've spoken to a number of city employees. And there are a lot of city employees that do not live in the city. And there's a reason for that. I'll use, use myself as an example. You know, now I'm a public figure. Okay? I've only been in office for a couple of months. But as time goes on, more and more people are going to know who I am. And if I go out to dinner at a local restaurant with my wife, there's the possibility that people will recognize me. And I'm on my personal time, doing my personal business. But people may intrude on my time. Now for me, that really doesn't matter. I'd be happy to speak to anybody at any time about anything. But I spoke with one police officer and it was at the shop with a cop event. And he had arrested a gentleman three years ago. And he was with his family in a restaurant. And the gentleman that he arrested three years before that recognized him and caused an event. I just want you to keep in mind that there are people that work for the city. They perform their functions for the city, but they do have private lives. As far as these two positions, okay? As the City Manager mentioned, these two positions are internal positions. They do deal mostly with, City Clerk can tell you, mostly with the City Commission. I'm in and out of the City Clerk's office 14 times a day, trying to find my way around things. I can't really think of a good reason to require someone to live in this city just because of they work here. Everyone has a right to their personal life. Now, having this in the charter, I just feel is an unneeded regulation. These are my feelings on it. You know, I do not speak for the board. I, I speak for myself. And I was on our charter review board for four years. Okay, so I've discussed some of these issues before. The requirement for these two officers to live in our city is just something that's just not needed in my estimation. Thank you.
One thing that might help people if, if, you know, the, the City Clerk and City Attorney jobs are really statutory and legal in nature. They provide technical knowledge and information and guidance to, to the commission. They're one of the three officers who report to commission. Commission can hire them and fire them. Everybody else works under City Manager and Department Heads. So these two positions are key because they're really providing the technical expertise we need. So none of the decisions they make are really affected by whether they live in the city or out of the city, or whether they have a personal vested interest in how it benefits the city or doesn't. It's very legal or statutory in nature. That's something worth considering when you think about if it's worth it to change this charter amendment. We've never hired an attorney for our City Attorneys Department that I'm aware of that lived in the city before they were hired. They've all been required, I could be wrong, but I thought that, I was told that. So, you know, they've all had to move eventually into the city within, I think it's a year. And, you know, that can be tough for people who maybe have a home and a family and, you know, have networked, you know, themselves into neighborhoods and friends and other things. So it's worth considering. We don't put that requirement on all the rest of the, the, the folks who, who work within our various departments. Anyway, Ms. Togars.
Observation. I just said, find it ironic that we've been working all these years to bring jobs to Northport for Northport citizens due to the mass exodus on Toledo blade up wherever they're going. Now we want to take two good, high paying jobs instead of retail and put them out somewhere else. So my thought is, is, you know, we need jobs in Northport for Northport citizens and these are two good ones. But I'm not qualified for them, but.
You know, I, I'm all about jobs and I talk about it all the time, but there needs to be a balance. And when I look at it, we do compete with other municipalities for people. And we want to hire the very best people that we can. When we looked at some of our neighboring municipalities, they don't require those positions to live within their city or jurisdictional limits. And other things being equal, we could lose someone who would be excellent here in the city simply because of that requirement. Again, on the other hand, as has already been said, the City Manager is such a publicly facing position. And it is customary across multiple, many, many jurisdictions that they require that position to live within their city boundaries. So again, it's a balance. And sometimes we don't always like where we land, but it's sort of reality.
Thank you.
Sir.
Greg Hughley, Northport resident. All five of you have to live in the city to be elected as a commissioner. Commissioner, City Manager is part of his contract. Now, if these other two positions are charter positions or whatever you call them that report to you guys, they should have, and they're going to earn wages from my tax dollars, then they should have to pay the same taxes that I have to pay to earn those wages. That's my position on that. You will get a no vote out of me because they need to be stuck here in the city, just like I am. Because if I got to pay your ridiculous taxes, so should they.
Thank you. Good point. All right. Moving on. We've got item 25 dash 1921. Discussion regarding referendum question relating to borrowing authority for the Northport Police Department Headquarters Project with Public Questions and Answers Session. City Manager, you want to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor. So the justification for this question is, we've had a large amount of discussions regarding the growth management we heard from Dr. Kemp from SCPS. And we also know that we've heard from our design consultants, we've heard from our police team. And to manage the growth that we are experiencing, the commission has decided to move forward with this amount, $115 million for the police headquarters. I want to make sure that we are clear to the ask of the citizens for this particular question. The question of do we need a police headquarters has already been justified. We've had two independent reports that were done. Both of them said the exact same thing. That we needed to build a new headquarters, not renovate and not do substations throughout the city. Both of those are more expensive and more timely than what we're asking you today. There's also been many public discussions with this commission on the price of the police headquarters. They've had public discussions, they've had public comment. And have made a decision that the amount is $115 million that we're asking the citizens. The question that we are asking you is, can we use this one specific general obligation bond tool at a low interest rate to build the station? That's what we want you to decide upon. And if you say no, that's your choice and we will follow the majority of what the city says. But we will still build a police headquarters. We will find a different financing tool that will have a higher interest rate. But we will still build a headquarters. The growth of the city, as Dr. Kemp said, is happening. We are trying in the most fiscally responsible way and the most engaging and transparent way to do this. But we will have no other choice but to find a different option for this particular project to be successful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
I do support the police department. And I do believe that they've proven that they need the space. What I don't see is how we're going to pay for it. We, we want to borrow 115 million, but then we have this whole, I think it was Barbara wanted to get it at 85 million, which seemed like the reasonable middle ground. And then you said you're going to go back to your other projects that we've already gone through the public process and everybody's approved. And you're going to borrow from Peter to pay Paul, which leaves that other 50 million still hung out there. So my problem with this is not the need and not the police department, because I certainly support it. My question is, why haven't we done the work to identify exactly how we're going to get this done? And that has not been done.
Be happy to answer it unless anybody else wants to.
I'll do it, Bill.
Okay. You know, in the beginning, if you roll it back to the beginning or middle of last year, we talked about maybe 85 and how it would be paid. And would 50 million of it come from surtax? And would 35 million come from, uh, borrowing or, or, or increased property taxes? And the rest be made up from government grants and the sale of, of maybe the existing police headquarters? But the feedback was so strong against touching that surtax fund. You know, in '22, the citizens throughout the county voted and the citizens of this city voted for a list of projects. And we would have had to pretty much gut that list. Had the police headquarters been on that list along with price widening, over two thirds of all the, all the projected surtax money for the next 15 years would have gone to those two projects. So we heard the citizens outcry. We saw the impact. We had long, lengthy discussions in commission about what the impact would be to the various departments of the city and the quality of life and the amenities that we provide to our citizens. And sucking 50 million dollars out of the surtax fund would have, would have been devastating. To answer your question, this 115 million dollars would come from you citizens, us citizens. We are citizens. This will come out of our pockets as well as you all to raise our property. It really would be a separate line item on, on our tax bill and ad valorem tax assessment to raise our taxes for this particular project, like the road bond. And it would be for a property tax appraised at 246 roughly. I believe it's $121 a year or about $10 a month. For a property worth half a million dollars, it would be a couple of hundred dollars a year. And for some people, that is nothing to sneeze at. Okay, that's nothing to sneeze at. If you're on fixed income, if money's tight, that's a serious issue. For people who understand the need and why we need to build this, but still can't afford it, I don't have a real good answer for you. It would be a lie to say I did. But the reality is, we try to do the best for the most. We have to maintain public safety at the level it is. Commissions have already, as City Manager said, decided it needs to be built. And this is the right size to build it at and the right price. But make no mistake, to pay for this, our ask is for all of us to raise our property taxes, basically, to pay for this.
So it's 115 million. All of it's going to be on bond. None of it's going to be juggling. I heard, I heard talk from, just recently from the city site about selling the old PD headquarters at $200 a square foot to NDS Building Fund.
Well, what, what opportunity we may have is, as you heard Mr. Gunnin say, once we do this, one, we have the ability to structure the bond payments on a curve over the next 30 years to help dovetail with our growth projections, which is going to help keep that number low. And two, there's opportunities for perhaps grant monies for assets that do get sold. I mean, there could be a whole host of ways that we may be able to pay it down.
115 is where we're starting so we can get started on the project.
You got it.
Then I think there was a $10 million grant from the state that I assume we'll be able to make happen.
We're hoping. And, and what they've told us is y'all got to get this project done to do it.
So again, what about this, this deal with the old PD headquarters? The old prices have been done. I've asked for them. None have been done. It dropped from, it was 10 million last April and now it's down to a 5 million switch. Something's wrong there. And everything on these all feel this way, squishy. And which is my big beef with that. I, I wanted to support the solid waste transfer station. It's nowhere ready. And I also wanted to support this one.
You know, I think that there may well be a lot of different ways we can help pay down this cost.
Before we vote for it though, Phil.
Don't know because how can you count on grants that you can't apply for until you have the ability to borrow for it, until you actually have it placed?
People are pissed. I don't know how to say that nicely, but they're ticked. And I'm trying, but you know, they think they voted for the police department and turned it down already. I don't know how you turn that around. But if we can't make it clear, it's 115 million. Forget about the, and 100, if we get the 10 million fine so that they can own that.
That's what I say. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anybody else on the police? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Tammy Ream. I forgot to introduce myself while ago. I had listened to, you know, the meeting that they had, I think it was last year, about the police station and how it was developed and how they were figuring out what to do. And then I recently was listening in on a commission meeting and I think Barbara, you brought this up about, you know, when we bring in this extra space or whatever that's building out for up to 50 to 60 years out, then are we going to have to replace the roof over it and all of that? And kind of what we heard back was that they had to build the whole thing out because they just had to. So one of the things I wondered was, I know that they have the, this is what we really need is a police station. And I totally agree you guys need it. I don't want to come and say, no, you don't. But is there a possibility that there could be a plan that the pieces that are needed now be built and then add on the rest? And I know that that was brought up about, then we have to do whatever, you know, the code is at that time, which I don't think is a bad thing because they make codes based on what's really needed. So is there any way there's a possibility that we can have that built out, the pieces that are needed now, and then build as time goes on? And I don't know that I, I heard that answer anywhere. I apologize if it's been asked already.
Thank you. Good question. I'm going to ask Deputy Chief.
He's glaring at me, I think.
It's a good glare, I promise you so. So to answer your question about the, the shell space and actually Shingle Schultz is here. Aaron can, can speak to this. And if I'm wrong, please jump up and correct me. But I'm pretty sure we've been on the same page from the beginning of this project. So with the shell space, and actually this was actually commission driven. Former Commissioner McDowell asked about taking us into growth, planning for growth. So we don't have the same incident we're having now, the current headquarters. So the growth taking us into 2065 was adding 30,000 square foot, square feet of shell space. The cost of that now to add it while you build is approximately 9 million. And Shingle Schultz and the consultant saying, okay, listen, three years later, let's say you guys figure out in three years down the road, you need that shell space to be added. That 30,000 square feet at 9 million is around 27 million. So, and you're, again, like you said, the building codes, you're married to the building codes. And if you add on 25% more, correct me if I'm wrong, 25% more of your building onto your current building, the entire building has to go back to the current, it has to be conformed to the new building codes of that time.
Can you make a breezeway?
So, but I mean, to, to answer your question is, yes, thank you, Chief. Thank you. And actually to Commissioner Langdon, which we all looked at, the commission also looked at options from Shingle Schultz, 100, 122 million build, 100 million build, which is taking 100 million build, which is taking out the shell. And then they looked at an 85 million build. So with that, the 122 million was the shell space that we're at, which we're now at 115 million. The 100 million took out the shell. And then the 85 million that someone had brought up, why didn't we stick with the 85? We can. But according to Shingle Schultz's estimation of 85 million new headquarters, we would also have to keep the current headquarters that we're in as well for the space. So the other departments that would need space as NDS, Parks and Recs, they need space. They would, they would lose that that shelf, that that space of our current headquarters, which is 32,000. Interestingly enough, I think what sold Commissioner Langdon, I remember, was once we got the study back and found out our projections of what was first given to commission of our projection growth, we are at 96, 90, 96,000 residents right now. When it was first presented to commission on this growth from Shingle Schultz and the consultants, that we were supposed to hit 100,000 residents with 97,000 calls for service in 2030. We are already five years ahead of their projected growth through Bieber. So we just hit this year 90,000 calls for service in the city. So we're at 97,000, 96,000 residents approximately with 90,000 calls for service, and we're in year 2025. So it, the need is there, the growth is there. And if I'm correct, no wrong, if perfect, okay. So and honestly, with Chief Garrison here, I want to take it is that we are, we are trying to be good stewards taxpayer, projecting for the future. We don't want to fall, we don't want to leave here saying that, oh, we just built for what we need and let this accept. We we built a roadmap. I can tell you this, when our headquarters was built, technology was not a thought back then, the IT world. Our rooms weren't built for IT rooms. Who thought in today's world, real time intelligence centers are becoming the biggest thing? The room for that is massive. The commissioners will tell you that. That's the growth. So when you have the growth and we, him and I leave, which is a short period of time, our successors are going to have that roadmap to build into the future for wherever the future is going to take law enforcement. That's succession planning and continuing planning out east or out in the north for Welland Park with their future growth. And even out east for, you know, another substation that's way out in Yorkshire. Those are all planned, but the headquarters is still the hub of day to day operations for police services. People don't know that. You see a black and white and they think, you don't need all that space. They're out there. No, you don't. That's just the beginning of an investigation or a call for service. Starts with dispatch, goes to them, and then all the people in the background, your records people, your property evidence, your crime scene techs, your detectives, your analysts, your administration, all those people are at that hub working on those cases, making a successful prosecution and keeping our community safe. So, you know, just to explain, I hope that helps a little bit, but a lot of, I can tell you this, since 2018, Chief and I in the team have been building strategically, planning for a police headquarters. It was needed in 2018, the first consultant that they talked about, two, two consultant companies. The first one said in 2018, your department is 185% above capacity at, in 2018. And I can tell you, when Chief Garrison took took office in 2018, I believe we were at 113 sworn. We're at 159 sworn today. And we're continuing to grow. So.
I just was looking at, can we do this, you know?
Yeah, no, under, understand.
Little money now.
Under, understand. That's a great question. Great question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Debbie McDowell again. So having the benefit of being on the commission when we were in these really early planning stages. One of the biggest things that was an eye opener for me is, why didn't they plan accordingly when they built the, this police station? Well, back then, they were coming out of an economy that really, really sucked, 2008, 2009, 2010. We all know what happened then. And we had to build a police station. And they only had a very small amount of money. So they built something instead of planning for the future. So the future is here. And I personally kept saying up on the dais, I don't want to repeat that same mistake. Let's plan for the future properly. Because my gosh, the PD that was built was what, 12 million dollars, something like that? And now it's like 122, and that's because of growth. All right? Every year that we wait, it's going to add another about 6% onto that cost. Believe me, I do not want to pay this increase. But at the same time, this is one of those things that has to get done. All right? It's, it's not a want. It is, it's definitely a need. And if I can offer a suggestion, because I know that now the city cannot advocate, yes, please vote for this, or no, don't vote for that. Please use technology and show the people what your police headquarters looks like. What happens when they start a call and just kind of walk it through? Post it up on the website so people can see what you guys have to deal with. All right? You know I'm a visual person, and it took you to show me how important this was. And I really think that by showing the people what you guys are undergoing right now and why this is needed will be a very big step in the right direction. If we don't do it now and we control how this is going to be spent, you heard the city manager say, it's going to get built and they will figure out a way. That scares the bejeebers out of me more than this 100, whatever dollars it is every year. All right? Now, I do have a couple of questions. Sorry, I'm off my soapbox. Sorry. It's hard habit to break. Do we have 100% design plans for the Northport headquarters? Because they can't hear you. It needs to be recorded.
Hello, Kim Humphrey, project manager with Public Works, and I'm working on the police department headquarters. So we do have 100% exterior design at this time, which we've shown commission.
Has, has C Mar given, okay, sorry for the acronyms, people. I don't remember what C Mar stands for, but the people that are doing the engineering and and working with the design and construction and all that kind of stuff, have they given the guaranteed maximum cost for construction yet? If so, what is that number?
So, hi, Kim again. So the way a construction manager at risk works, yeah. We, we establish that budget. We agree on the GMP together. So if at the time they bid this project, let's say it's, it's a million dollars over what we thought it would be, we scale back until we get back into that budget. That's the beauty of working with a construction manager at risk. You have the ability to manage into your budget. So having said that, no matter what, our budget is what we say it is.
And what is that?
Well, I have a total project budget of 122. That's not talking about where money is coming from, total project budget, 122.
Is that 122 including the total debt service? And for those that don't know what debt service is, it's kind of like your mortgage. It's your principal, your interest and any fees. So does that GMP include total debt service?
Ms. Kim.
Good evening again. No, that would not include the total debt service. And let me get down to the total, including debt service for that project would be 200,959.
Say that number one more time.
200,959. It's 85 million in interest, and that's at 115 million for the project.
Okay, so if we're going out, I'm sorry, guys, if we're going out to bond for the 115, how are we going to have the money for paying back the debt service total? Where's that money?
So the debt service payments will be about 6.7 million each year, every year, per year.
Where's, where's that?
So there's 5 million budgeted in the project, and then the bonds would be, I'm sorry, I went backwards. The capital improvement millage would be issued enough to pay the 6.7 million per year debt service. That's what the capital improvement millage is for, is for that debt service.
So the millage isn't the 115, we're not paying on the 115 for bonds. We're going to be paying ad valorem taxes to include all of debt service and the bonds.
So we're not going to collect ad valorem, we're not going to collect the debt service millage and save it all up and have 115 million and build the project. We're going to borrow enough to pay the 6.7 million dollar payment. So not borrow, the, the capital improvement millage is enough to pay the debt service annual payment.
Thank you.
Very coolly again, I'm just a simple guy. This 115 million dollars is going to be another line item, non-odd ad valorem tax on my millage. Is that correct?
It'll be an ad valorem item on your tax bill. That is correct.
As one line item. And now you're going to hit my other capital improvements with another tax increase on top of that to service the debt. Is that correct? 85 million has got to be paid somewhere. And she said capital improvements, that's one of the dang on line items on my, on my tax bill. That's one of my line items.
Make it clear, will, will the amount we're asking the citizens to raise their taxes to pay for this project, pay for the build of this plus their interest?
Yes, so it would be exactly like the road bonds. So we, we borrowed money.
Just make it simple. What's, what's my taxes going to look like? Line item on taxes. Make it real simple.
So related to the Northport Police Headquarters? It would be the, if your sample was the 246,000, it would be 100 and 141 dollars annually.
Go ahead. What about, what about the capital?
That, that is the capital improvement millage. That 141 dollars is what's going to pay the debt service. That pays the 6.7 million dollar payment to build the project. Yes.
So I get one bill and it's all in one. I'm not going to get split apart in two different places, what you're telling me. Is it going to be?
Correct, related to the Northport Police Headquarters, it's that one line item, the capital improvement millage.
Thank you, Kim. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Steve Jaeger. So it's 115 million bonded. And just, we just heard it's 122 million approximately for the, for the build. So where's the 7 million coming from, additional 7 million? Plus, how do you, are you using any of the sales tax revenue for this project?
No.
No?
And the difference between the two has been spent, 4 million of it, 4 or 5 million of it was for design and a whole lot of other, you know, expenses in getting to the actual build. So the 115 is what we're asking to be able to borrow to get this done. The other's already been spent or is in the works. That's already accounted for.
Okay. I'm, like a lot of people here, I support building these head, this headquarters. And, you know, general obligation bond is probably the way to go. But my observation is, is that in local government, especially it seems this one, it takes you so long to do things. So it's another argument to do the bonding rather than try and scrunch together multiple funds and have constant discussions, commissioner meetings, change in commissioners. I don't know how long this has been on the docket, but it's wasting money by waiting. So what I would encourage you to do when you do build it, when you dig, when you put the first shovel in, let's get it done quickly. You know, Sarasota Memorial is going to build a hospital, 450 million dollars. What is going to be done? End of '26?
Longer than that.
Longer than that.
Well, whatever.
But you're right.
So get it done. Now, the other thing I wanted to comment on here is that when we talked about the first item, we talked about, we go out and borrow money. Guess what? We may not have to pay that back. We may get it from FEMA. The taxpayers are saving some money. Well, I'm a state taxpayer and a federal taxpayer. You know, I'd liked local governments to be mindful of that. Is that when you get resources from other government entities, you're not saving the taxpayers any money. We still got to pay those taxes. Those loans have got to be paid by somebody. And just be mindful of that.
Appreciate that. To put a little perspective, you know, you heard talk of 225 million dollars to build a high school. About 125 million to build a K through eight. We're going to see a county ask of over a half a billion dollars for a prison from the county. You know, the reality is these projects cost a fortune. They cause sticker shock for everybody, you, me and everybody. We know we need this. Our experts have said this is the right way to build it so that we don't have to spend a lot more later trying to keep up with our growth. We do not want to repeat the problems we had, move into a police headquarters like we did that was already outgrown when we, the day we moved into it. This gives us the ability to plan for 40 years. It also allows us, since the ask is actually, is this the best way to finance it? The reason it is, is general obligation bond will give us the lowest interest rate possible. It will allow us to structure that payout to tie into the growth of revenues that we're projecting over the next 30 years. Keep this number as low as humanly possible and allow future citizens, future businesses to help pay for this cost. Our problem's always been in the city. Since we didn't have borrowing power, we always had to accumulate all the money we needed to do whatever projects we want. Who's paying for that? Us, the ones who live here right now. I think, and I would think everyone would want, those who are going to benefit as well into the future, who haven't even decided to move to Northport yet, their businesses or their residents, to help pay for this. They're going to benefit from it. So the ask is, is very focused, not do we need it or is this the right build? But is this the best way to pay for it? Because as been alluded to, there's other ways. I mean, you could have somebody else build it and own it and lease it. Good God, we couldn't control what we get and we will pay so much more and we wouldn't own it. I mean, there's other ways to skin a cat always to get, you know, the need met. But it's our job to be the best stewards of your tax dollars. We think this is the best way to do it. And we're hoping if you ask enough questions, if you look at all the information, you look at the studies, you'll concur. That's what we're hoping. Anybody else?
Pretty much, I'd like to address the gentleman that just stepped down after, after he spoke. It is true, you know, as far as that emergency borrowing power, that we're borrowing money that federal, state taxpayers pay. Those dollars are there. People do pay taxes. What we're trying to do is get our share of it back. Okay? To give taxes and not get anything for it, you know, other states, other communities are going to be asking for money. Why should we not ask for our share of it?
Anybody else? Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask the Director of Finance to stand next to me in unity here. Commissioner, former Commissioner, to follow up on your question about the 200 million.
Commiss- former commissioner, to follow up on your question about the, the two hundred million. Borrowing a hundred and just nod if I'm right, okay. A hundred, hundred, yes, if I'm right, a hundred and fifteen million that we borrow. If, if we borrowed on zero percent interest, it would be a hundred and fifteen million till you paid it off. That's not, so we're borrowing at a, at a small interest rate. That's for thirty years, the two hundred million that, um, Director Williams said. So. If, mind you now, the six million per year, two hundred and forty thou- two hundred and forty-seven thousand assessed home, a hundred and twenty-three dollars a year. As more growth continues in the city, that number per year, more people are contributing into the six million. It goes, starts to go down. Am I correct?
It, it does, yes.
Also, they have the ability as more growth comes in, they could pay it off sooner, the bond. Is that correct?
They, they've not, the bonds have not been issued, so we'll look at the, um, limitations, but there should be the ability to pay them off early. Yes.
So in essence though, this is a, a bond with growth helps pay, the growth helps pay for the infrastructure.
Assuming that property values remain where they are or continue to go up. People come in, all of that spreads out that six point seven million among other property owners. And also with the property values going up.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one other thing I'd like to mention, it's along the line of what they were just talking about. Um. I spent some time today with our Public Works Department. Uh, one of the gentlemen in Public Works told me that. We're adding. Forty-five households to the solid waste routes every week. Those are forty-five new homes that are coming in here and they're going to be paying taxes. That means they're going to be sharing in this. Okay? That comes out to about a thousand homes a year. Okay, so there's going to be more revenue to come in to help to pay for these things.
I just got one. Another question, sir? Go ahead, sir. Sorry. I'd rather have.
I don't know where you guys are. You must be in La La Land. I've lived here twelve years and not one time in twelve years has my Northport property taxes ever gone down. They always went up, and I'd like to see a show of hands. Has any of your taxes ever went down in the last ten, twelve years and from Northport? So don't give me that, that they're going to go down. I'm not buying it.
So a capital improvement millage is different. What you're talking about is a percentage rate. The millage you're talking about is a percentage rate. This one is a millage that supports a six point seven million dollar debt payment. So that six point seven never goes up. That stays the same. It's based on a percentage, you know, we, we estimate it based on four percent. That doesn't change. So assuming there will always be more people moving in, more taxpayers to split that six point seven among. Then yes, it will, your dollar amount that you'll pay related to the police headquarters will, should go down. I'm, I'm saying that only because I want to, uh, if there were some reason that property values dropped, people quit moving here. I, I, I always cover the just in case, um, to make sure that we're giving you all of the information.
Uh, question. If, uh, Mr. Williams, what you stated, why don't you retire the road bond? The road bond for forty-six million dollars amount for that stays since the beginning to today same as it was originally?
I can answer that question. Actually, in two thousand twelve, the road bond passed referendum by the citizens for, I believe it was forty-six million dollars. And, um. We do, I think there's been two hundred and sixty miles of roads that have been repaired or restored. Since that road bond, we do a little over twenty miles a year and we are still doing them. In fact, if you looked recently and there was actually some Facebook posts by the city, I believe we're on to Biscayne. Um, over this next thirty days or so. So actually, that is a perfect example. Of a program that really has done exactly what it was intended to do.
And that assessment was a designated amount and that's why it doesn't go down. All of that is put back into the road. So this is completely different. This is the designated debt service payment. The estimated six point seven is what's determined. In that case, the assessment amount was determined.
I'm Dave Carper. Uh, I have the, the same question. I mean, the road tax, I've lived here ten years and hasn't went down, the road bond. How do we know this tax isn't going to go down when we get more people? The road in twenty twelve, what do we have? How many citizens? We had what, uh? Sixty thousand people? And now we're going to have, we got ninety-six thousand. It doesn't go down with the extra people?
Miss Kim, can you speak to why was it the road bond wasn't structured that way so it would have come down over time? What makes it different than the proposed bond for this?
And not the taxable value. I apologize. It's tied to the parcel and not the taxable value. They're completely different ways of, of generating revenue. One is a road and drainage district, which is completely different from. A, a general fund type setup with a capital improvement, uh, millage.
This new bond that we're trying to get past, it's not going to have, it's not going to be like the road bond, you're telling me? It's going to be tied to the amount of citizens.
To the taxable value within Northport. I'm sorry.
It'll be affected by the millage rate? Or no?
No, no. This will be its own, um, rate, but that rate will go down every year. As there are more citizens in town to split that six point seven million estimated.
When does government reduce our taxes?
Um, all the time. Um, yeah, this, their, their, their capital improvement assessments in Sarasota County, you can see them adjust every year. As that, the need for the debt service doesn't change.
A good, a good example is the legacy trail bonds that the county do. They get adjusted and they have been adjusted every year. And that's what this one would be exactly like.
Um, before I came here, I checked the Chicago Merchant, uh, Mercantile Exchange. Gallon of gas was two thou- two, two dollars, six cents. What is selling for three dollars?
I can't remember the last time this commission or any commission voted on the cost of gas, Mr. Alden.
The point I'm making it, that it is so much money on the gallon of gas. That shouldn't be any bond issue prior any future. Federal.
Thank you.
Federal tax on gallon of gas is eighteen percent throughout the United States. And there are many, many, it actually is eleven taxes and local taxes, including the federal tax. There's plenty of ma- money, but you don't know that. Go to the, uh, go to the, uh, county, a county office and ask those people, where the money went?
Miss Anderson.
Good evening. Um, okay. I understand how money means everything to everybody and we're tight right now. But you have to look at the necessity for the police station. All over the state of Florida, we are now expanding in the comas, the police station. Broward County is having to expand because they didn't plan properly. The rapid growth rate within our city, taking into consideration Welland Park and how many thousands of households are coming in there? What are we supposed to do? How are we supposed to service all of these households with the same response times, with the same amount of, um, professionalism? That it takes for a police station to answer every single type of a call with the amount of growth that we have. We have to really not lose that particular point that we need this police station. And a hundred and fifteen million dollars is nothing if you look at the, if you look at the rest of the states. And Florida alone, a hundred and forty million, a hundred and sixty million police stations on, on the, on the growth rate that's happening within our state. We've already exceeded our growth rate, ten times fold. So what are we supposed to do as a city? Not build a police station? We understand the amount of monies that it takes, you know, per resident. But with the growth rate and the households that are coming in, is going to decrease that annual, uh, payment that we're going to have to pay. So we really have to not lose, lose the, the point that we need this police station. They have to have what they have to have in order to serve us. That's all I got to say for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move.
Another reason that, that I'm for this as well is we have to take into consideration about some of the space that we're looking at too. And if you ask the officers, one of the key pieces of space is the retention of evidence. And you can ask them that in some cases, they have to hold this evidence for an upwards of a hundred years. If a court case comes back and that evidence has not been retained properly, that individual, no matter what they have had, could be walking on the streets again. So that takes up a lot of space. It takes manpower and it takes everything to make sure that it is taken care of. And when we moved into the PD years ago, we didn't have that space and stuff is stacked to the ceilings. It's atrocious. We need to do better than that. And that's all part of this package as well. So I just wanted to put that in there as well.
Alright, we've been at it two hour, up, okay.
My name is John, so I'm presenting, I'm an engineer. I know what it's all this about. I built many police stations. You have no idea, a hundred, a hundred fifty or a hundred fifty or a hundred twenty million dollars. It's just giving you a shell building. Does not count for the internal communications and HVAC, electrical and therefore. And I, all I see is US ci- uh, the citizens paying for this. What about the developers? They're the, they're the ones causing most of the damage. They're the go- the police is going after people in Wawa. Recently, how many shootings you had there? Accidents. It's not the citizens. Why are not we charging the developers? They should pay fifty percent more than any citizen. Anybody agree or disagree with me?
It's a good question.
Well, first piece of your question, um, the hundred and fifteen includes everything, everything, everything in that project.
Communications.
Everything.
Everything.
Everything. Um, as far as why shouldn't the developers pay? I mean, in some respects, they have made huge contributions to our city and others they haven't. Take the safety building in Welland Park as an example. Developers spent their money to build it. They gave it to the city and impact fees are going to pay it back over time. So, you know, as other needs arise, whether it's water facilities, reclaimed water, potable water, developers do help. Um, as to why and if the police or, or, or developers are going to contribute to this?
Are they?
Everything with a taxable value will. So to the extent they own property, they're going to pay like everybody else.
It's all in there, black and white.
Yeah, of course. Let us move on to the next item. We've been at it two hours. Let's keep plugging because I know people got questions on these next two. Um, twenty-five dash nineteen twenty-two discussion regarding referendum question relating to borrowing authority for the solid waste transfer station project with public questions and answers session. City manager, you want it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item, and I hope everyone got this flyer that was out on the table, uh, contains a lot of good information. This project is one that we got directed from commission in November of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we have been working on it over that period of time with some delays in the project due to hurricanes and other items that came before it. But this is a problem that is related directly to our growth that we're trying to solve for. There is approximately one point four million dollars in projected annual cost reductions with the project. We also know that the price of the project has gone from nine million to fifteen million due to higher construction and material costs. Uh, the current challenges that we face with this are travel and safety risks, landfill issues, uh, vehicle wear and tear and loss of productivity. By building this new transfer station, it's going to allow us to keep up with the current growth that we have. And not have to add any unnecessary FTEs as we problem solve for new solid waste transfer station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gibson.
I want to talk about solid waste transfer station. So he just said the price went from nine million to fifteen million. Can somebody show me a design plan? Where, where did the estimates come from? In November twenty-one, I believe, was to go bring back more information and we haven't had that in the public. So that's what I'm missing.
Chuck Speake, Public Works Director. So it actually did go back to commission in December of twenty-two. After we investigated for that year, brought back the, the options of either a private partnership or private, uh, public partnership or building it on our own. Commission then directed us to build it on our own. So it was approved by commission in this direction, December of twenty-two.
I disagree that it was approved. I mean, if you look at the language, because I did go back and look at those. But the P three, I, the whole push of reimagining the city was about building business. P three, this is a perfect opportunity for a P three. We don't need to be in the business of a solid waste transfer station. We can get the benefits of it. And I absolutely agree on the savings and the benefits there. But we shouldn't be in the business of making money on a waste transfer station. I think I talked to somebody about Jim Gabbert. And Sarasota would be a good contact who would know those. That's fifteen millions that they put in and we don't have to pay that. It saves it on your credit card. So when we do have an emergency, perhaps we could actually have the money there. So that was mine. But I'd like to see the, the design ready?
No, that's going to be a C Mar project. So they designed to the amount as, as it's already been talked about.
He just said the price tag went up six million dollars.
It did. We're, so the city of Northport isn't the only city in the country that's building transfer stations. So we have a lot of comparisons out there through our consultants.
So a transfer station, you dump the garbage and then you loading them up on transfer trailers to go to the, to city, to the county or wherever you want to deliver it. I think you could go a little further and trans- with transfer trailers, correct?
Correct.
So we did a couple of estimates on the debt service for this one, and I apologize, I have it in here at fourteen million. We did estimate it at four percent. Um, that would result in an eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar debt service. So this would actually pay for itself. I don't know if you want to speak to the savings that would pay more than the eight, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Sure. So we're looking at a one point four million dollar, uh, savings in today's dollars every year. That doesn't, that. We absolutely do. We, we had it broken down. We did it in twenty twenty-one when we brought it back. Uh, we've updated those numbers. At that point, I think it was a little less than a million dollars. Now it's up to one point four due to costs and, uh, rising costs for equipment and. Equipment and, uh, fuel and, uh, labor costs. So we will get that out if it's not already out through communications. We have spreadsheets that break it down. Currently, we're traveling, we're spending fifteen thousand hours a year traveling from Northport to Sarasota landfill. Yes, correct. So any, any. Half in, in geography, not in population.
Greg Hewley, simple man, simple question. If you're going to save all this money, is my taxes either in the solid waste or the road drainage, are they going to go down? Are they going to go down? Are they going to stay the same or continue to go up? Are they going to go down with all these savings?
So we're looking about a two dollar increase per month to solid waste. That's going to flatten your rate. Because at an estimate of around two thousand new customers a year, I'm supposed to put on a new garbage truck every eight hundred customers. So I'm looking at adding three trucks, three operators annually right now to keep up with growth. Uh, we already have several trucks that we use for our, our transfer of our recycle and our, uh, yard waste. We will, it's part of this project is to add more trucks. Yes, absolutely. And you'll have more, more trucks than tractors, right? Trailers, yes. Sorry. We have, we have that cost built into the spreadsheets when we, when we show the, uh, potential cost saves. Now remember, those cost savings are today's dollars and numbers. We're going up by two thousand customers a year. So as you go up more in customers, those savings will increase.
Thank you. So being a huge fan of transfer stations and knowing firsthand how much those transfer stations have and can and have done in savings of the taxpayers. Um, all you have to do is look at your assessments over the past ten years and you will see that they really have not increased all that much. Except for this past year, but we won't get into that one. This transfer station, there has been no updated data that since twenty twenty-one, pre, pretty much pre-COVID, um, the full effects of COVID, um, showing how much it's going to cost the taxpayers for this increased in assessment. There's been no updated data showing what additional revenues will come in from the other users, not just Northport property owners, but other users like if I own a landscaping business and I have to dump my debris, I don't have to travel up to Knight's Trail myself. I can just take it to the Northport, um, transfer station and then I can pay Northport for that convenience. There's been no data showing those revenue projections. We really need to see some updated data and projections on this kind of thing, not to mention the cost of the assessments um, that are going to increase. And how come impact fees aren't going to be even considered? And this I said multiple times, how come impact fees are not even being considered to help build this?
So the, the project is already funded for about two and a half million dollars of that. There's impact fees included.
Right. But the rest of it, we, we got thirty years of impact fees with all this growth that's being projected that could help pay for this.
Our impact fees are used by truck. I don't, we don't have a stockpile of impact fees if that's what you think. We don't have that. We use those impact fees every year to keep this operation running and keep that assessment flat. That's what they're for and they're not to, to stockpile for long term for projects or for equipment replacement.
Okay, so the rest of it was, where's the data showing the additional revenues from the other users?
Sure.
And also what is this assessment going to look like to the property owners?
So as I mentioned, it's about two dollars a month for each customer or residential customer.
Sorry, I, I looked on the website and I didn't see anything right before I came here, but, um.
We'll make sure that gets put up. About two dollars a month for that. As far as the, uh, revenue side of it, we're not, our initial phase of this is to take care of the residents of Northport more than it is to be a commercial business. Right? So as we build this now, it's to take care of Northport. It will then potentially expand in the future, um, to, to become a revenue source, but that would be a much larger transfer station. But right now we're trying to get control of the population growth here and how to manage that garbage.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you. That's Frank Lama right over there, solid waste manager.
I'd like to remind everybody. When I moved here in two thousand and eight, every school bus, every day, came from Sarasota to Northport, transported our children to school, picked them up at the end of the day, delivered them home, and then all those school buses went back to Sarasota. If you go over off of Toledo Blade right now, you're going to see a whole bunch of school buses. They don't go to Sarasota anymore. They stay here. Why is that? Because it saves money. It makes sense. And that's the same thing with this transfer station. Back, I think in my first month in office, we had some strategic planning days for commissioners. And there were a whole bunch of projects, you know, that this city needs. And we didn't list them all, you know, in top priority, you know, one, two, three, four, five. But at night I went home and I did put them in my priorities. And the transfer station was right at or near the top just because it will save money, period. Take every garbage truck that we have, solid waste truck, and have them spending their time picking up the solid waste and then driving to Sarasota. That's employees, it's trucks, it's fuel, it's wear and tear on the trucks. We have to buy trucks more often. If they stay here and we have that transfer facility, never mind the fact that someday in the future, other municipalities may be able to use our facility and we can get revenue from it. But it's just going to save us money. Period. It just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, everybody. I'm saving my political capital for the other two town hall meetings. But I really want to comment on this, uh, referendum question. I'm a simple man and I like common sense. And with this question, I do believe it will save us money as we were told. And we know it's going to save us money. Not only that, it will make us money as a city in my view and in my opinion. Let's look at our recycling system in the city of Northport that we designed. And I want to give the credit to whom the credit is due, and that's Frank Lama. And he designed it and he actually proposed, if I'm not mistaken, to have two bins, to have one for the paper carton and one for the other plastic recyclables. And I do not know any other city that has that. I don't even believe that city of Venice has that. We, I think it's the only city. So, uh, our city is, um, in a lot of aspects is a model for other cities. And with the, this recycling, now, I mean, with this transfer station, I do believe, you know, it's, it's going to be so efficient. We're not only saving on the time, uh, using our trucks, operating hours, not to mention traffic. If some trucks get stuck, then we have to pull them out. And that's amounts to additional expense for the city. Uh, with this transfer station, we, we can enhance all these efficiencies to a higher level. We're gonna, and in my opinion, we can have dumpsters there for dumping metal. So if the citizens have some fridge or whatnot, you know, microwaves, they can bring it loaded themselves, I mean unloaded themselves. Uh, we can make money on that. We can make money on, uh, throws, um, metals and we can save money on bulks because citizens will be bringing their own garbage to the transfer station. Now, this transfer station is not a landfill. I just want to make sure that people are aware of this. This is just a transfer. That's what it implies. It's transferring of garbage and transferring to a different landfill. Uh, but, uh, I just want to say that it will pay it for itself. It will make money. Um, and, uh, a lot of people say, and it saddens me that, you know, people say, oh, we're not going to vote for this. We're just going to say, no, 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 no. Without even looking at the benefits of what it will bring to the city. Uh, and this is one of the items that will benefit the city tremendously. So with that, I just want to say that please consider when a lot of our citizens are misinformed, not informed, but they're misinformed. But this is the item that I want to vote for, one of the items. And this will be a good for the environment. It will save the trees because we're going to recycle properly. Uh, we, we take care of the environment. I'm, I'm big proponent of, um, recycling system and care for the environment. But as a contractor as well, it's so convenient for the contractor industry or, or sector of our city. Load them up, the, the, load the trailers. They're going to go transfer that garbage, uh, unload that garbage there. They're going to pay to us, not to some other municipalities. So I guess it's a win-win. I don't know if you guys have any ideas otherwise, but I think it's a common sense and I'm a common sense guy. It will not increase our taxes, hopefully. But, uh, I don't know if anybody want to add, and I'm against raising taxes. So you guys are aware of this. I'm very fiscally responsible. I don't want any extra expense and that will come when the budget comes. Uh, that's another discussion, but we have to be efficient in our processes. And with that note, I'm going to end. Once we start the project, we want to finish. This, uh, talk about transfer station has been in talks since, since twenty eleven, if I'm not mistaken. Is, am I correct, Chuck? Twenty eleven, we on twenty, we are in twenty twenty-five. And, um, I don't know why it's been so long. I don't know. I never got the answer why it's been so long. They begin to inform us why, but it's just been dragging and dragging. And as a city, we have this reputation of not finishing the projects. So I encourage to study all these questions, to ask more questions, um, to make comments. And as a city, we have to come together. And this is, uh, this item is not Fletcher's wants, you know, it's the city's needs. That's what I'm getting into. We have to be united and from more, uh, into uniting our city for the more efficient ways. Thank you for your time. I went overboard.
That's why we only give them the mic once a meeting. Thank you very much, Commissioner Petro. All right, let's move on to our final item, twenty-five dash nineteen twenty-three. This discussion regarding referendum question relating to borrowing authority for capital improvements to the Pan American Waste Water Treatment Facility with public question and answer session. City manager, you want to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the city's utility department needs to make improvements to the affluent plumbing station, a system that transports reclaimed water. A new thirty inch pipeline needs to be built between the Pan American Boulevard facility and a deep injection well where the water is treated, um, where the treated water is discharged to. If this item is successful, it will allow the city to finance the project through the issuance of bonds that will be paid back from water and sewer utility revenues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before anyone comes up with any questions, this one really is a, it's broken, we need to fix it. It's old facility. It has had spillages that have been somewhat contained. And the last thing we want is to have regulatory bodies come in here and step on us and order either shut us down or force us to spend astronomical amounts of money to, to, to clean this up. We need to have control of this. So if anybody's got any questions, we have our utilities director here. So on this, this one, come on up.
First question, how much is this going to cost the utility customers? There's nothing on the website. There's been no discussion about what the ultimate cost is going to be to the users of the utility department.
Thank you. That's a great question. Um, we're not sure without having the ability to borrow the money, uh, what the actual payment will be. So just to give you a little bit of history of this project, if you have your flyer on the back where it says, um, that they overflow and that it overflows into the Maica Creek, the city does not have a permit for surface water discharge. So when it overflows, we are in violation of our permit. And two, three weeks ago, I received a courtesy call from the Department of Environmental Protection that we will receive a consent order for the last spill. And what that means is that they are going to set our schedule. And this project is part of that. They will say that this project has to be done. In addition to other mitigating work that we're doing, which includes tightening up our system so that we don't have excess flows during rain events. But all of that's going to take time. They told me on the phone call that this is actually good for the city because that will put us at the top of the list to get state revolving funds, to which I replied, we can't borrow money. And she gasped and then said, oh, well, that's, that's not good. So state revolving funds can be zero to two percent interest with principal forgiveness. And when I went to Maine for my last job, we had three projects which the principal was forgiven, taken. So they're good loans, they're statement, it's federal money that comes through the state. It's excellent, uh, money for us to have. But this project's going to have to get done. That's why it's on the referendum and not sitting in our capital. Because we can't wait. Um, just having, it's not going to be done overnight. It's going to take some time to do this project. But it's in good faith to show the state, to show the federal government if the EPA should get involved. Hopefully they wouldn't, but it shows them that we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we are not discharging to surface water. So this is, this is where you, this is where you get, this is the first city I've worked for. You could not borrow, you could not obtain SRF loans. So this, it's a little unusual. Um, this is going to be, we don't know what the order will be if there's any fines. It goes back into the cost of the project. So I'm not expecting this to be actually punitive, except that we have to do this project.
Since I know that it's not completely designed, when do you expect design to be completed? And this first shovel to actually start construction to turn?
Currently, we are at sixty percent design. And most of the work that we have now is just getting it through wetlands. So there's just work that has to be done on how to locate the pipe itself, the thirty inch.
So when do you expect construction to start?
Um, what do you think, Sue? The end of twenty twenty-six to start?
Twenty twenty-seven because we know how things.
Well, we're, we're, we're going to, we like to shoot for the stars. So we will, we'll, uh, do our best to get that in. But in the meantime, we're doing everything that we can to not have it overflow the pond. But the last event was a, was a serious rain event and it caught a lot of people by surprise. Our neighbors up and down the state from our storms are facing the same sort of penalties because they're just not ready. We're, uh, we keep growing and we keep getting flooding and our infrastructure is just not, it's not ready for it. So we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I understand. Um, this, I have no dog in this fight, um, because I'm not on city water. But, uh, seventeen million dollars to repay is now essentially only going to have half of the population to repay that loan. So knowing how much that's going to cost is vitally important to be able to say to the, the people that are going to be paying this. That it, it's an important piece of the puzzle. And I'm sorry, I'm aghast that nobody can really tell us what that cost is going to look like to those users. And it's not just residential users, it's commercial and everybody. So I hope that if anything, you guys can put your heads together and put something on the website because revolving loans are not guaranteed, uh, that you're going to get the money. Grants are not guaranteed. I can, we know we don't get all the grants that we apply for. So, so worst case scenario, the users deserve to know how much their monthly water bill is going to go up.
Right. Well, we do have some numbers, um, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand a year at a two percent. And this is because this increases our capacity to bring on new customers. this can use capacity fees versus just rates. So there are ways for us to pay that back. This is not a tax. This doesn't come out of your taxes. This is all utility. So so depending on how many users we have, because we're adding a lot every day with this new development that would be distributed over that. We do have a rate analysis coming in for this year, so we'll be able to tell you more very soon in this budget season.
Obviously, on these last two items, there's been, you know, questions regarding the numbers on the transfer station as well as this wastewater treatment facility. And, you know, I would believe that staff will work diligently to put some of this information out. Numbers, analysis, the more information, the better. People have a right to know what this is going to cost them. And again, this is a project that, you know, it's broken. We got to fix it. We've already got regulatory authorities stepping on us to fix this thing. So we got to do it, but we need to know what it's going to cost the citizens. Every citizen has the right to know before they go and vote in May. So I would urge staff to please address these two and, and, and see to it that as much information as possible gets up there on that site as quickly as possible and gets disseminated out through the community because these are good questions. They deserve answers. Anybody else have anything? Correct. Want to speak to the mic, please, sir?
Black water, right? Sewer. I'm not on sewer. I'm on septic tank. Do I have to pay? No.
No. Unless you want to, we will be very happy to have you pay for it. You're the best. Get his name, get his routing number. City clerk, do we have any general public comments?
Greg Hewley, Northport resident. You commissioners are unbelievable. Another tax-funded special election. It doesn't matter who we elect for commissioner. All of you get into office, forget about us taxpayers and begin your irresponsible and excessive spending taxation. And this has been a worsening problem since taxes spent in Fletcher has become the city manager. So here you are again wanting us voters and taxpayers to approve more bloated spending, taxation and debt. You will not convince me you need a hundred and fifteen million dollars to build a police station. What are you building, the Taj Mahal? Hundred and fifteen million dollars is outrageous and demonstrates your irresponsibility with our money. You will not convince me this city cannot renovate the existing building and or develop a couple of police annex stations to split up your overbloated police staff for half of that amount. And then I can almost guarantee you within one year, you will be back begging or mandating more taxation after you blow through the budget and overspend again. Don't believe me? Just look at the widening of the Prash Boulevard project. It's already over budget with the price estimate still going higher and yet not even one inch, one inch has even been widened in the twelve years I've lived here. Plus the four point four million dollars you just blew and lost in the whistleblower's lawsuit. There's no more, there's more proof our tax dollars are really wisely spent, right? My family and I will vote no to your hundred and fifty million dollar money pit. Emergency borrowing, same thing. You will find every excuse to declare an emergency so you can borrow more money and it's going to raise my taxes again. Again, I'm going to vote no. City clerk and attorney, candidates need to live in Northport and pay the ridiculously high and ever-rising Northport assessment taxes that I have to pay. And otherwise, they do not deserve to be paid by the same Northport tax assessment dollars. Again, I will vote no. Trash transportation and a higher solid waste assessment, more taxation, my vote again is no. You commissioners and spendaholic Fletcher need to get the message. Some of us citizens are sick and tired of your spending and higher taxes. Under spending tax Fletcher, this and this commission, my Northport property taxes have outpaced both the inflation rate and my social security COLA. Each and every year Fletcher has been the city manager, let alone the ten percent FPL city tax you just added on to my electric bill. As a reminder, we voted back in November, allowed no to additional borrowing, but you threw a fit when you didn't get your way. So here you are again wasting more of our tax dollars to fund another election so you can take another bite at the apple. Repeating, all five, all five of you and Fletcher just overspend and tax, spend and tax, spend and tax. And my vote is no to all of this nonsense.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Going to be short and sweet. Thank you. Thank you for hosting this town hall. Thank you for answering the citizens' questions and having this interactive symposium. It has been very enlightening, very informative. I'm grateful that it's being taped. And I strongly encourage everybody to tell your friends and neighbors to come out to the next one, if not the next two, because it sounds like more information is going to be forthcoming. And I think maybe we need to start supplying food and coffee at commission meetings and maybe we'll get more people to come to the commission meetings. Thank you, you guys. You all did a great job.
Thank you very much. And, and thank, thank you to all of you who came out here tonight on a rainy night. I know it's been a long evening and not everybody heard everything they want to hear, but I have to tell you, keep asking, keep engaging, keep spreading the word for people to come to these. Please, it's so important that people ask the questions. If they have all the information they need to make informed decisions, they can make informed decisions, whether it's to vote for these or not. That's all we're asking is for everybody to pay a little attention on this. You all want us to involve the citizenry in our decisions. We need your help. We need your support. So we need you to help us a little bit. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening. With that, I adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-six.